I would like to call this meeting of Festus City Council to order. Roll call, please.
Councilman Boyer.
Here.
Councilman Collier is absent. Councilman Vins.
Here.
Councilman Cook.
Here.
Councilwoman Templeton's absent. Councilman Weiner.
Here.
Councilman Tenon.
Here.
Councilman Dennis.
Here.
Pledge of allegiance, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Tonight's bill's total, one million, six hundred and nineteen thousand, six hundred and forty-four dollars and fifty-six cents.
So moved, but slow down, Greg got a lot of money.
Got to spend it before the end of the fiscal year.
Motion's been made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Councilman Cook.
Yep.
Councilman Weiner.
Yes.
Councilman Tenon.
Yep.
Councilman Dennis.
Yes.
Motion has passed. Remarks of visitors. Mr. Brute. Broncato, are you here? Come on up, give us your name and address. Sir, you have five minutes to speak on whatever you want to speak on. Okay.
Won't keep you that long.
Okay, go ahead.
My name's Ralph Broncato, eleven seven 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 County Road CC. And part of County Road CC, where I'm at, if you're not familiar with this, if you kind of could visualize where the Texas Roadhouse is, and take that road all the way up to Gammel Cemetery, very close to the ZX Gas Station on sixty-seven, that's the area I'm going to be talking about. First, I want to thank the chief from the police department because we've talked to him about some issues with speeding, reckless driving. It's sort of the back area Festus that gets forgotten about. Most of it is unincorporated Jeffco, except two residences of which I'm one is Festus. And the city of Festus takes care of the, the road and the policing there. They've done a good job of extra patrols. They've been pulling over a lot of people with excessive speeding. We still have an issue where YouTubers and other people like to go there, film in front of our house, peeling out, making huge clouds of smoke, and it gets a little disturbing after a while. And they usually start from the south end and work their way down the hill. So we talked before, Mr. Camp looked at a traffic study for us to see what could be done. We don't want to make it inconvenient. People don't, you know, like speed bumps. I'm not a big fan of them, but I'd like to see if the council would consider maybe putting one at one or both ends of the road to kind of slow people down so they don't use it as an experimental test track. And I think it would calm things down in the neighborhood and make it safer. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much, sir. Moving right along. Bids, fire department, lights and siren for the twenty twenty-four pickup truck. Staff report, please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I'm for you tonight for the purchase of some lights and sirens for the pickup truck that we purchased. Was on last year, this current year's budget, but the delivery just happened two weeks ago. So this would be Chief asking Michelle to roll the twelve thousand dollars budgeted into the next budget season. So we sent out multiple requests for some bids. We received two back. One from Public Safety Outfitters in the amount of seven thousand eight hundred and seventy-six dollars. And one from Defender Product Solutions in the amount of eleven thousand five hundred and fifty-two dollars. Recommending to go with the public, I'm sorry, the Public Safety Outfitters bid for seven thousand eight hundred and seventy-six dollars.
Do we have any discussion?
Yep, and one question for you, that's a difference, pretty significant difference in bids. Are we comfortable going with a lower bid? Because lower does always mean better quality.
Yeah, that's the one chief recommended. It is a code three light bar. I believe the police departments used public public safety outfitters in the past.
That's correct.
So, yes.
Is there any other discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the bid from Public Safety Outfitters in the amount of seven thousand eight hundred and seventy-six dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Councilman Cook.
Yes.
Councilman Weiner.
Yes.
Councilman Tenon. Councilman Dennis.
Yes.
Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Get your light bar. Our next is for the City Hall Public Works renovation. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. As you may recall, earlier this year, we issued an RFP for improvements to the restrooms and kitchen here at City Hall. We had three bids. The low bidder was the one we selected, and unfortunately, that contractor wasn't able to do the work. After stepping back, talking with Michael Christopher, our Public Works Director, they had some renovation work that had been on the books for their restroom and windows at Public Works. We thought it would be a good idea to go ahead and combine the two projects. It made it a larger budget project as far as seventy-one thousand five hundred dollars. We thought it would make it a little more attractive to prospective bidders. We got one. However, we did check out the, the bid that we did receive in response to the RFP from KB Contracting. Mike Thomas is the Director of Construction there. It's a, it's a very good bid. They did answer all our questions and provide all the submittals that the RFP requested, so that is the recommendation to go with the bid from KB Contracting in the amount of, and hang on, I have it right here. Yeah. Fifty-nine thousand, one ninety-two and some change. Eighty-five cents.
Do we have any experience or references with, with this contractor?
We did check their references. All of them, they're, they're in Better Business Bureau. They're rated there, and we also checked some references, and they, they came out fine.
Any other discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the bid from KB Contracting for fifty-nine thousand, one hundred and ninety-two dollars and eighty-five cents for the City Hall Public Works renovations.
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilman Weiner.
Yes.
Councilman Tenon.
Yes.
Councilman Dennis.
Yes.
Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Councilman Cook.
Yep.
Motion passes. We can do our renovations. Next one we have tonight is from Public Works. The twenty twenty-four street striping for around town. We'll take that one first.
Good evening. The project aims to improve roadway safety and visibility through street striping, which is important for traffic management and public safety. The only bidder was America's Parking Remarking. They will be re-striping throughout the city at approximately sixteen locations. They had a bid of nineteen thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars and six cents, and the budget for the twenty-three, twenty-four was twenty-five thousand dollars.
Is there any discussion?
I would just add, this is the company we use every year.
On those sixteen spots, can't remember all of them when you come across them. If there's a spot that we don't see that we thought might should have been striped, do we just come to you and ask you why it wasn't, or can it be on, added to it later?
Yeah, we can add it in there. We will want to try and keep it within whatever budgeted amount we're trying to stick to, but they gave us a very reasonable price, so if there is something that does come up that doesn't get striped, please let us know. We'll either grab it in this one, or we're going to do it again next year. We'll catch it in that.
Well, and it might be a spot that doesn't, you know, meet the standard to get it done, but I mean, I, I get people every once in a while will say, man, I wish it was striped better or some, or some kind of marking, and, and I just don't know if that's part of the one because, you know, I, I know we do what we do, but there, there is some streets that just they, I get questioned all the time about.
Yeah, if you feel like like a stop bar or something.
Yep.
If people have concerns about that, that would be another thing that we can capture in this as well.
Okay, yeah, I'll try to make sure I write it down where they asked me about it, because there, there's been a few spots and I, I gotta just write it down so I can make sure I note it to you, and then you let me know yea or nay on it.
Yeah, we keep, I mean, we have some pretty substantial lists of storm drain streets.
When did you, when did you expect it to be done?
They didn't give me a date on this. Since we're rolling into the next fiscal year, we weren't going to try and push for them to go up September twenty-ninth or anything.
Right.
We had told them after October first, we'll be in the new fiscal year, and so they sounded agreeable to that with their schedule, and so after approval tonight, I'll send them the paperwork, and I should get a date.
I mean, like after, let's say, November first, so we see all the spot they was going to do done by then?
Yes, at a certain point, if it gets too cold, you can't street strip anymore.
Well, I mean, that's this way. Question, if someone asked me, I can check it out and then find out if that, if that can be done, or, or if you tell me, no, that's just not a spot we do, or whatever it may be.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, I mean, yeah, I've got to give you time to, for them to stripe where they're going to stripe. I just, I can't remember some of these different streets. People ask me all the time, it's, man, the marking is just terrible. And I just didn't, yeah, I just need to write it down so I can ask you about it, and that way I'll know for future. Thank you.
Mike, one question. Do we have the capability to do any striping, or do we do any maintaining of such things like walls and the little striping jobs that may not fall under the big contract deals? I had somebody ask me about that. It was a wall. If, if we were going to maintain and paint it.
I'm not entirely sure that we would have anything to do with any markings if they're on walls. I know we do own some around the city that we can see if there were markings there before.
Yeah, it's up off scenic, and then they, they just, they just said in the past that we have painted it, and I don't even know why it came up. I think because of new construction up there. So I didn't know if we had any capabilities of striping anything or maintaining anything ourselves anymore, or probably best the way we do it.
So that one would be part of the North Mill Project, which is, it's slated to be happening. Well, it should be happening right now. However, our contractor's been pushed back, and then Spire moved in.
Right, right, so, okay, I just thought I didn't know if we did any of it ourselves anymore.
Just one quick question here. There was a lot of crosswalks in town that are not very visible at all right now. And I don't know how often we paint these. Do we, do we paint these every year, or every?
Typically, if they're part of the area that's being repainted, like with this.
Sure.
Then they would be.
Okay, so if, if that's the case, and they're as faded out as they are, and, you know, a lot of drivers don't pay attention to them because they can't see them. Is there, or is this like the, the premium paint that you use that would stay on for the longest amount of time, or is that something we could upgrade?
They've changed the type of paint you're allowed to use. It used to be an acrylic that stayed for a while. This is a latex. It does meet the reflectivity standards. They put the beads in it. The glass beads in it, but it, it, it doesn't hold up as well as the old paint did, but you're not allowed to use that old paint anymore.
Is there anything we can do to make it so they do last longer, so there is better safety? Not really? No, okay, okay.
Had to ask. But that does come back to Kevin's question. Can we do any of ourselves, or does it all have to be bit it out?
So the paint, like Greg was talking about, we do not keep that on hand, from what I understand, just because there is a cost to it, and if it isn't used, it will go bad.
Well, no, I mean, striped streets, for instance, that doesn't fall under, can we do any striping or anything ourselves? Or does it all have to be bit out to somebody?
It all has to be bit out.
Okay.
All right. Is there any other discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the bid from America's Parking Remarking for nineteen thousand, two hundred and forty-two dollars and six cents.
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Councilman Cook.
Yes.
Councilman Weiner.
Yes.
Councilman Tenon.
Yep.
Councilman Dennis.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have Ed, Edgewood Water Main Replacement Phase Two Change Order.
The Edgewood subdivision has had all of Phase One pipe installed as of right now. All service connections are expected to be completed today, and remaining items are restoration in their contract. So they have completed this project beyond even what we were expecting. To ensure the speed and quality of work continue, we are seeking a change order for Phase Two. CE Contracting provided pricing for Phase Two under the engineer's estimate at one million, four hundred and ninety-nine thousand, eight hundred and eleven dollars, and is ready to start immediately on Phase Two.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the bid of one million, four hundred and ninety-nine thousand, eight hundred and eleven dollars from CE Contracting for Edgewood Water Main Replacement Phase Two.
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilman Weiner.
Yes.
Councilman Tenon. Councilman Dennis.
Yes.
Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Councilman Cook.
Yep.
Motion passes. We can get started on that one. Twenty twenty-four Asphalt Overlay Change Order Two.
Edgewood Lane has been cut open for water main repairs, new service lines, and other utility repairs, leaving it in need of repair. The section of Festus Center Drive, which is a separated entrance exit, was found to belong to the city for maintenance. And will be overlaid as part of the change order since it has been needing an overlay.
I'm sorry. I guess I should put my phone on quiet.
Thank goodness there's a firefighter here.
Yeah. Leo, I thought. Leo, you look like you had a heart attack. So with how much construction work's been out there, if you've been out to Edgewood Lane, you've probably noticed that there are portions that are unraveling. You've seen the cut through the street. Spires had to come out there and make repairs as well. The whole street through that entire section, if we, if we leave it for much longer, it's just going to get much, much worse. And so now that they are done with all of the work along there, we are feeling that going in and getting it repaired now before leaving it to degrade would be best.
I think it's worthwhile to mention that even with this change order, because of the pricing we got on the original project, we're still well within our budget on overlays for the year.
It'd be an ideal time to do it. Get it done.
Oh, definitely. Glad to see it getting done. It's not too soon, though. I mean, well, for settle reasons, it won't.
They completed all their excavations, I would say, two and a half weeks ago. And did their fill. And so between the rain and the heavy trucks, they actually, so they cut their width of their excavations just wide enough for their, they have a tandem duly dump truck that as soon as it gets filled, they do in lifts and compact. But once it gets to the top, they will take their loaded dump truck and drive it over the top of it. And so far, doing that, we have seen very little settling happening out of any of their water excavations. And so we're, we're probably going to start copying them. Yeah. Just because of how well it's worked out. But after two weeks and the process that they go through, we're, we're really confident that the overlay should go really well.
Well, and we both know it needs to be done. I mean, even if it would be a little messed up, at least it's still going to be better than what the heck it had been, so.
Yeah.
I mean, hopefully it doesn't, and we'd have to readdress it later, but I mean, yes, I know something has to be done because I did drive that road in it, yeah.
Yeah.
It's bad. Hey, Greg. This change work comes out of T-Tax, right?
Correct.
Thanks.
Is there any other discussion on this change order? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the bid of one hundred and eighty-two thousand, nine hundred and seventy-one dollars and sixty-nine cents from Joggers Paving and Contracting. Motion's been made and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Councilman Cook.
Yes.
Councilman Weiner.
Yes.
Councilman Tenon. Councilman Dennis.
Yes.
Motion passes. Ordinances and resolutions. Tonight, we have Bill forty-seven eighty-nine on the agenda. Would the clerk please read the bill for the first time?
Bill number four seven eight nine, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Festus, Missouri, amending the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four fiscal year budget and establishing an effective date.
Bill forty-seven eighty-nine is now open for discussion. Can I have a staff report, please?
Mayor and City Council, included in your packet tonight was a staff report outlining all of the amendments for the twenty-three, twenty-four, which are incorporated in the proposed budget that you'll be passing tonight. I'll just leave the floor open if you guys have any questions regarding any of the line items that were adjusted.
Is there any discussion? Is there any questions? Is there any councilman that would like this bill carried over to the next reading, next meeting? Hearing none, do I have a motion to suspend rules and read Bill forty-seven eighty-nine for the second time in title only?
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, would you please read Bill forty-seven eighty-nine for the second time?
Bill number four seven eight nine, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Festus, Missouri, amending the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four fiscal year budget and establishing an effective date. Councilman Cook. Councilman Weiner.
Yes.
Councilman Tenon. Councilman Dennis.
Yes.
Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Councilman Vins.
Yeah.
Bill forty-seven eighty-nine has passed. Also on the agenda for tonight is Bill forty-seven ninety. Would the clerk please read Bill forty-seven ninety for the first time?
Bill number forty-seven ninety, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Festus, Missouri, adopting the budget for the fiscal year beginning October first, twenty twenty-four, and ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, and establishing an effective date.
Bill forty-seven ninety is now open for discussion. Could I have a staff report, please?
Mayor and City Council, you have a staff report included in your packet tonight. I just wanted to, if you guys have any questions regarding any of the capital outlay additions from the third draft to the final, I'm open for discussion if anybody's got any questions regarding those items.
Any discussion? Is there any council member that would like to have Bill forty-seven ninety be placed on the next month's, next week's meeting? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to suspend the bill and read forty-seven ninety for the second time in title only?
Second.
I'll make the motion so Dave can second it.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, would you please read Bill forty-seven ninety for the second time?
Bill number forty-seven ninety, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Festus, Missouri, adopting the budget for the fiscal year beginning October first, twenty twenty-four, and ending September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, and establishing an effective date. Councilman Cook.
Yes.
Councilman Weiner.
Yes.
Councilman Tenon.
Yes.
Councilman Dennis.
Yes.
Councilman Boyer.
Yeah.
Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Bill forty-seven ninety has passed. We also have Bill forty-seven ninety-one on the agenda. Would the clerk please read the bill for the first time?
Bill number forty-seven ninety-one, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Festus, Missouri, amending the zoning map of said city as established by the planning and zoning ordinances of the City of Festus, Missouri, and establishing an effective date.
Bill forty-seven ninety-one is open for discussion. Could I have a staff report, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. This is the rezoning of eight thirty-five American Legion, the property directly behind the American Legion. The owners were proposing a hundred and sixty-eight unit apartment complex, including one, two, and three bedrooms. The, a pool, community building, and dog park. This is the, the Brex are doing this, or the same ones doing the project at West Village, and it's a very similar project. Thursday, the nineteenth, P and Z did recommend this for approval.
Mark is the American Legion out there if they disbanded their shooting matches.
I don't know that they've disbanded them, but that is going away.
Yeah, because I was going to say that there would be a little tough in that area.
Right.
Hey, Mark, two questions for you. Just, and forgive me, I'm used to counties P and Z. Does our P and Z have the ability to make changes to a potential zoning change, like the gentleman who wants his request in the fence at eight fifty-three? I think it's a reasonable request, and I know the developer probably ended up doing it. I just wanted to know, some of that stuff should be fixed before it comes here.
P and Z is a recommending board, so they would make recommendations for that. They could adjust.
They could add that on as it comes.
As a recommendation.
As part of our report.
Yep.
I'm not sure if our P and Z members know that, because like traffic, fence requests, stuff like that can all be discussed and recommended ahead of time. That could alleviate some problems.
That is discussed quite often.
Okay.
And actually does happen.
Could you talk to the developer about looking at eight fifty-three? I, I've never seen the property, but I think he makes a reasonable point, and I, I know developer is a pretty strong developer and usually will honor requests, but can we look into that, please? I think it's a reasonable request.
Yeah, absolutely.
Is there any other discussion? Yes, sir.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. We'll get to you, sir.
Do you want to write for me?
Yes.
I am ready. Is this on?
Yes.
On the very left, so it's from the beginning.
Oh, okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. My name's Dave Monarchs with Monarchs Engineering, representing Lorenzo LLC. In this petition, good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I just want to briefly hit the highlights of the development and explain what is proposed, what they've done in the community in the last year or so, and answer any questions that the council or the mayor or the staff has relative to the proposed development. So the proposed development's called the Legion Apartments. Obviously, the the DeBrex purchased nine point eight eight, nine point eight eight acres this year from the American Legion. And you can see the area that they purchased in red. So to answer the question, the shooting range is part of the property that they purchased, so I think they've already suspended. We've had Uh, we've had several discussions with the American Legion. I believe they haven't been having the turkey, the shooting. Opportunities, so. There's, uh, sanitary sewers available to the property and then there's two access points to American Legion Drive. Uh, next slide, please. Just hit the down arrow. Okay. Thank you. So, uh, the developers proposed, uh, a property swap with, uh, the American Legion. So you can see the area they purchased in red. Uh, in the thick red outline. And the area in the light green is the area that we're proposing to develop. So the difference is the area where the pavilion and restrooms and maintenance building is currently to the north and west of the building. Uh, would be purchased by the DeBrex and then in return, the little area, uh, that goes out to American Legion Drive on the south end would stay with, would be returned back to, uh, the American Legion. And so developers going to relocate new facilities in that strip, uh, between the parking uh, south of the airplane. So, any questions about that aspect of the project?
Dave, was that still a childcare next door there?
To the north?
Yeah.
I, I believe the school district purchased.
School district has it.
Yes.
Will there be some kind of a fencing through there or?
Uh, we have a retaining wall proposed. I'll show you more.
Okay.
Coming up.
Okay.
Is that okay?
It'll be fine.
So I think that's really all I wanted to show on this slide. It's the next slide, please. Do I have a time limit? I need to speed up. So this is the, uh, uh, the topographic survey for the site shows the lay of the land. Those are two foot contour intervals. Uh, all those dash lines, so it slopes significantly from the back of the American Legion building to the west. Uh, Creeks, uh, Woodside Creek is down below. Um, at the bottom of the hill on the other side of a, a, a stream. And there's a, a ravine that courses through the property from the south. Uh, you know, and heads northwest. So you can see on this, uh, map, uh, the facilities are gonna be relocated from the pavilion and the strip of ground, uh, that accesses both sides of American Legion Drive. Next slide. So this is our site plan, uh, shows the proposed parking, the entrances. So coming in from the north. Uh, we'd have a small parking lot, the fitness center, the pool and the dog park. And I think we would have a short retaining wall along that north property line, so we would have to have a fence. Uh, at the top of the wall to prevent, you know, protect from falls. Uh, so you can see the layout of the parking and proposed buildings. We have a hundred and sixty eight units proposed. Uh, fifty six one bedroom, ninety six two bedroom and sixteen three bedroom units. Uh, three hundred and twelve parking spaces, average, um, parking per unit is one point eight six spaces per unit. Uh, we're proposing sanitary sewers, storm, s- storm sewers, grading. And, uh, also it'll be similar to West Village with covered parking. Next slide, please. So this shows the proposed development with the proposed grading. We're gonna need to accommodate the grade with some retaining walls. Uh, which you can see on, uh, the west side of the site and some along the north. Uh, one thing about purchasing the area and, uh, and exchanging the property with American Legion allows, uh, the developer to construct a new building where the uh, where the pavilion was and do excavation. Essentially, that was the highest point of the site. And really everything else would be an import fill. And so that allows developer to generate some material from onsite. And in exchange, the, uh, American Legion will get a new pavilion and storage building and restrooms. So, uh, next slide, please. So this is the, the same, uh, drawing you were looking at, but I just, uh, blew it up a little bit for clarity. So you can see, um, you know, a little better, uh, the grading and the proposed buildings.
I see a retention pond in there.
Yes, sir.
Could you explain that a little bit or?
Yes, definitely. So the storm water, um, from the site generally flows from east to west. Uh, there's also a, a little bit that comes from the south and flows northwest. So we'll capture all the storm water from our development, from, from the roofs and, and parking areas. And routed into the detention basin so that we release it at the rate it is today. So all that additional water from the development would be held in the detention pond. Uh, it's basically slowed down so that doesn't, uh, increase the runoff. Into the, into, there's a stream, uh, just to the west, it runs behind. I'm sorry? That's why, that's why I'm here, Mike. So, um, I mean, Councilman Cook. It's got a ring to it. I had my day at least. So, uh, moving on, we, uh, any other questions about the detention basin? So we're gonna accommodate with that some, with a couple of retaining walls. And a grade, uh, you know, and some grading. So it is located, there is a little bit of flood plain and floodway located at the very west edge of the property. We're avoiding, avoiding the floodway. Um, we'll be meeting the city's flood plain ordinance. You know, through the development, uh, side development phase. So you can see the floodways, the dark line that has kind of an irregular shape just to the left side of the detention basin. Next slide, please. So this is the same scale drawing of the south portion of the site. And here you can see a little bit better what we're proposing on the strip of ground we're exchanging with American Legion. So you can see the pavilion and the restrooms and the, uh, storage building. So that would be, you know, new facilities to be constructed by developer. Then we're also gonna be able to do, uh, you know, do some grading that'll, uh, facilitate, you know, the side improvements. Uh, next slide. So this is just a reference drawing or a photo of Stony Pines. Next slide, please. This is in Barnhart, Stony Pines. Again, these are, I left this in because it shows the retaining wall blocks that we'll be using the same blocks in the proposed development of the Legion. Next, please. So this is the pool and cabana at West Village. Uh, I don't know if all the councilmen have, persons have had a chance to see it, so this is similar design. Uh, we might not have such a large wall next to it, but, um, it'll be the same size pool with a cabana. Next, please. So West Village, this is, uh, the same type of construction that we would propose on the Legion. So in the same concept, secure buildings with keypads, uh, monitored exterior cameras. Landscaping and sidewalks, covered parking. Next slide, please. So this is a, a recent picture of West Village showing, you know, the existing new buildings. Uh, the new parking, drainage, crosswalk, sidewalk, uh, cover parking. Next, please. This, uh, shows a little bit more of the landscaping, how the drainage is handled. There's not a lot of developers that put the attention, um, to the detail. Uh, there's, there's some that do and, but I think that this is nicely done. Uh, you know, this, you know, green lawns, uh, a rock swale, so any, you know, the water that goes through there shouldn't cause erosion. There's, uh, edging along each side of that, uh, rock swale, so just wanted to bring to attention that the level detail that the developers is installing at West Village and we continue to do at the Legion. Next, please. Some interior photos of finished units in the lea- in West Village. So shows covered parking, little bit better, open floor plan. Next, please. So the kitchen and open, uh, floor plan living room area, stainless steel appliances, solid. Um, granite counters, luxury plank flooring. Next, please. This, this is a floor plan for a, a two bedroom. And it shows the covered patio, uh, two bedrooms, a main and a second. The, the upscale kitchen and living area. Next, please. Then, uh, you went, there's, I think, just one left. So this, this is example of the secure keep up entry for the buildings. I think that's it. Are there any questions for me relative to the development or?
So I asked Mark, since you're the engineer, can you look at the fencing request rate fifty three?
Yes. Yep. So that can be incorporated into the plan.
There's a gentleman in the back that has a question. Go ahead, sir. Can you come up here to the microphone, sir?
Last night, so I'm sorry. So is there any guarantee that discharge of the water is not going to affect Woodside or the, the community down below? Cuz I mean, that's a lot of water you're gonna be taking off that hillside.
Yeah, yes, go ahead and answer. Go ahead and answer right quick.
So Woodside is located at the bottom of the hill to the west of the development. Uh, it is essentially just a single street that comes, um, I guess due south. And on the backside of those units is a stream. And the detention basin would discharge into that stream. So we'll meet the city's ordinances with respect to, uh, stormwater discharge, just like we did at West Village. So, uh, the additional runoff will be held in the basin and released at a rate that's at, at or below what it is pre-develop stage. So we'll protect the outflow of the pipe. So obviously, when the water leaves the detention basin, it has to travel into the, into the stream. So from that point, uh, to the, to our property line, we'll dissipate the energy with riprap or other improvements as needed and as, you know, required and mandated by the city and uh, and regulated by the, you know, the city's engineer.
All right, thank you.
I have another question. So since that property is gonna be right literally at, behind some of those things at Woodside and my property is actually, yet I'm gonna be looking out right there and seeing it. So what's it gonna look like back there? What's that pop, what's that line?
This is wrong. Yeah, if you can go back to those photos of Stony Pines.
It's, uh, just curious. You know, cuz right now it's all woods.
So, yeah. So essentially, this is, this is in Barnhart. The retaining wall and then the buildings behind.
Okay.
That's, that's similar to what it'll look like from, from creek.
So the retaining wall is two purposes. It facilitates the look of the property as well as the second part would be retaining the water from flying downhill.
Correct. Yes, so it helps us control the water. Um, and you know, the main thing is it, you know, it takes the grade.
Yeah.
And that's the same type, yes. And that's the same type of blocks that was used at this development in Barnhart and West Village. And so there, there's other blocks that can get the dorms attracted. So there, you know, so there, there are some decorations.
That's good.
Hey, hey Greg, correct me if I'm wrong, but when the project's done as well, we'll require as-built to show everything's been built as designed.
Yes, we will.
So that's, that's your reassurance. The retention basin is gonna meter out before post-development, so it should be just as it is now.
The other thing, well, I think you just answered that. There will be no access to anybody driving from that property down to Woodside.
No.
Okay. It's too, too thin and so many kids playing on it. Oh my God.
Yes, that's not gonna happen. Thank you very much, sir. We appreciate your comments.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor.
Is there any other discussion?
Yes, sir. Could I just, uh, chime in briefly? I just want to remind the council, what's before the, uh, what's before the council tonight is an ordinance to rezone the property from B one to R four. So as far as the, uh, specifics of, uh, uh, stormwater drainage and fencing and things like that, that's not really before you tonight. There may be some opportunities in the building permit process to require those stipulations. And of course, if the developer wants to voluntarily uh, abide by what, whatever, uh, restrictions or suggestions we're recommending, uh, he's free to do so. But tonight, I just want to be clear, is just to rezone from the, uh, B one to R four.
Okay. Thank you, Matt. Yes, Kara, if you can make it quick.
My name is Kara Kenyon. I'm a resident of Woodside Creek, uh, eight thirty fourth. Um, I have a Legion Apartments nature scaping plan. It is suggested that the Legion Apartment Complex add to their development. Plan, a green space for designated nature scaping to help replace part of the nine point eight nature woodland watershed. Preferably this nature scaping area strip would wrap around the perimeter of the complex to be most effective in slowing the flow and easing the erosion of, uh, and eventually capturing the water escaping the property. Um, so imagine that this nature scaping would be around the entire perimeter of, uh, the, the wall of the property. This plan includes ordering a variety of tree and shrub seedlings for the reforestation and windbreaks and erosion control. A low cost and free survey of the nature's natural trees can be provided by a forester of the Missouri Department of Conservation. With that survey information, the forester can then recommend which deciduous trees, evergreens and shrubs should be planted to replace the part of the green space that was lost to the apartment complex. There is also a variety of native wildflowers and natural grasses that could be planted along with those trees and shrubs. Or down the hillside to slow the flow of the water as it rolls off the hillside. These could be planted into terraces or as water catches cascading down the hill to further eliminate the rush of water towards Woodside Creek. Not only is there natural beauty in these flowers and grasses, but they do not require mowing and they bloom throughout the spring, summer and fall. All the seeds.
I'm gonna have to interrupt you. We have to, we have to continue with the meeting.
I have this in a letter form.
Okay, that'd be fine.
Yes. Wanted to mention too that I toured West City today to see that there was little and in most cases, no water runoff barriers around the perimeters of each of the construction sites. That there is, uh, there was muddy water and silt freely. That there is, uh, there was muddy water and silt freely following from the site and down the hillsides into the woods. And I would like to insist that these protections be in place during the Legion apartments. Construction to prevent these kinds of scenarios from happening, uh, during the construction.
All right. Thank you very much. Moving right along. Um, yes, if you have one, just, uh, hand it right over there. Is there any other discussion? Is there any council member that would like this bill carried over to the next meeting? Hearing none, do I, and I would like to entertain a motion to suspend the rules and read bill forty-seven ninety-one. For a second time in title only. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, would you please read bill forty-seven ninety-one for the second time?
Bill number forty-seven ninety-one, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Festus, Missouri. Amending the zoning map of said city as established by the planning and zoning ordinances of the city of Festus, Missouri and establishing an effective date. Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Councilman Cook.
Yes.
Councilman Weiner.
Yes.
Councilman Tenon.
Yes.
Councilman Dennis.
Yes.
Bill forty-seven ninety-one has passed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council.
We have bill forty-seven ninety-two on the agenda. Madam Clerk, would you please read that bill for the first time?
Bill number forty-seven ninety-two, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Festus, Missouri, amending the zoning map of said city as established by the planning and zoning ordinances. Of the city of Festus, Missouri and establishing an effective date.
Bill forty-seven ninety-two is now open for discussion. Can I have a staff report?
So thank you, excuse me, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Uh, five fifteen Roy has put forward, uh, rezoning requests from R two, single family to B two, community retail. Currently it's a single family, uh, dwelling that's unoccupied. They have just, or nearing completion of a recent remodel. They're proposing to operate a food truck on the property on the, uh, driveway. Uh, that is a pending use, or I'm sorry, that is pending a conditional use. Uh, if it gets rezoned to B two, so they'd still have to come back and apply for a conditional use to run that. There's no other proposed uses that they have at this time. Any other future development would have to meet all the current building zoning codes. Uh, Thursday, P and Z recommended disapproval. Uh, P and Z recommended disapproval.
Is there any discussion? If not, is there any councilman that would like this bill carried forward to the next meeting? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to suspend the rules and read bill forty-seven ninety-two for the second time in title only? Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, would you please read bill forty-seven ninety-two for the second time?
Bill number forty-seven ninety-two, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Festus, Missouri, amending the zoning map of said city as established by the planning and zoning ordinances. Of the city of Festus, Missouri and establishing an effective date. Councilman Weiner.
No.
Councilman Tenon. Councilman Dennis.
No.
Councilman Boyer.
No.
Councilman Vins.
No.
Councilman Cook.
No.
Bill forty-seven ninety-two has failed.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor and Council.
We have bill forty-seven ninety-three on the agenda with a clerk. Please read this bill for the first time.
Bill number forty-seven ninety-three, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Festus, Missouri. Authorizing the mayor to enter into and execute a contract for city hall and public works renovations with KB contracting. Incorporating said agreement as a part of this ordinance and establishing an effective date.
Bill forty-seven ninety-three is now open for discussion. We had a staff report earlier. I don't think we need another one. Uh, is there any council member that would like this carried forward to the next meeting? Hearing none, do I have a motion to suspend the rules and read bill forty-seven ninety-three for the second time in title only? Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, would you please read the bill forty-seven ninety-three for the second time?
Bill number forty-seven ninety-three, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Festus, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to enter into and execute a contract. For city hall and public works renovations with KB contracting. Incorporating said agreement as a part of this ordinance and establishing an effective date. Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Councilman Cook.
Yes.
Councilman Weiner.
Yes.
Councilman Tenon.
Yes.
Councilman Dennis.
Yes.
Bill forty-seven ninety-three has passed. And last but not least. We have bill forty-seven ninety-four on the agenda with the clerk. Please read this bill for. The first time.
Bill number forty-seven ninety-four, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Festus, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to enter into and execute a contract. With America's Parking Remarking for the Street Striping Project, incorporating said contract as a part of this ordinance and establishing an effective date.
Bill forty-seven ninety-four is now open for discussion. Once again, we just had this. So is there any council member that would like this bill carried over to the next meeting? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to suspend the rules and read bill forty-seven ninety-four for the second time in title only? Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carries. Madam Clerk, would you please read the bill for the second time?
Bill number forty-seven ninety-four, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Festus, Missouri, authorizing the mayor to enter into and ex- execute a contract. With America's Parking Remarking for the Street Striping Project, incorporating said contract as a part of this ordinance and establishing an effective date. Councilman Tenon.
Yes.
Councilman Dennis.
Yes.
Councilman Boyer.
Yes.
Councilman Vins.
Yes.
Councilman Cook.
Yes.
Councilman Weiner.
Yes.
Bill forty-seven ninety-four has passed. New business. First thing, I'm, I'm moving around in order. The first thing, uh, that I would like to do is. To rename. South Adams Park to the Earl Cook Park. We have a recommendation from the Parks Board that this is what they would like to do. I have the Cook family here. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion. Motion's been made and seconded to rename South Adams Park to the Earl Cook Park. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion passes. Earl now has a park named after him, which. Is in the test to his involvement in this community for many years. And we are proud to do this. Now for the. I'm, I need to take a little break. Greg's going to take care of the new business.
Actually would be pro temps.
Stacy's gone.
Stacy's gone. Uh, so it would be the pro temp tim. Go ahead. We'll, 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 we'll soldier on. Uh, no, no, if, if you want to take the break, sir.
Yes.
If council's, council's okay, we do have two other items of new business to address this evening. Um, one is the temporary liquor request for Street Fest. Uh, it was, uh, given to us by Maine and Mill Brewing Company. Uh, this is for Street Fest twenty-four, um, on the tenth of October from one to eleven. Can I, can I call for a vote, Brian? Okay, why don't we just do that?
A call for impeachment?
I think we can just note it. I mean, you can, I think you can discuss as long as you're not really conducting business. We'd probably need somebody to actually. A member of the council actually serving as the chair, if you want to conduct the business.
It can be anybody. You can. Turn on your microphone.
Right here.
Yeah.
Okay. So forgive me, Greg, help me out. We.
Ask for a motion to approve the temporary liquor license for Street Fest.
Uh, question, a motion to, a motion for the temporary liquor request license for Maine and Mill Street for October twelfth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
I have a first, a second.
All those.
All is in favor. I believe it's madam clerk, which, no, we don't need it. Just, no, we're good. So let's move on. Hey, I'm applying.
We also have a parade request.
Yes, uh, need a motion, please, for a parade request for Festus School District on Veterans Day on November eleventh, twenty twenty-four. Need a motion, please.
So moved.
Need a second. All in favor. Perfect. Veterans Day, move the council meeting from the November eleventh, twenty twenty-four to November twelfth, twenty twenty-four. Need a motion. Need a second. All in favor. Mainly notification, we're rolling through this now.
Nice job. That would get us to old business, sir.
Okay.
We have that.
Old business and we have none. Councilman Boyer.
Well, as usual, looks like the mayor's cruise was a success. Thank you Barb for what you've done down here. The music sounded good without being too loud. He does a good job every year. Dash plaques look good. A lot of nice cars, uh, big turnout. I don't know that there was any trouble, was there? Acting chief? Okay, um, the, uh, homeless situation, I hope. Starts getting better. It seemed like it's spreading throughout the city since they've kind of disrupted it over there a little bit. Uh, we had some issues down at, uh, Mobile on the Run. Guy was down there just taking note for an answer and trying to. Sell stuff and everything else, you know, and the people asking him to leave, but, uh, I guess you guys, uh. Took care of that situation. You, I know you were called upon.
Yes, sir. Uh, we had some people trespass from there and, uh, we've relocated some individuals from behind Panda Express. And they have until the first to get out from behind, uh, Walmart.
Yeah, it's going to be a situation for a while, but, uh, hopefully you guys take care of it. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Weiner.
Nothing, sir.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Cook.
Greg, it's been a long night. Can I circle back with you this week? Uh, Mr. Moser reached out to me, I live in Edgewood about, uh, possible speed reduction. He is in his eighties and sourced by their neighbors. If I could circle back with you, that'd be great. Mr. Mayor, it's all I have, sir. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Councilman Vins.
Nothing at this time, sir.
Thank you. Councilman Tenon.
Nothing.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Dennis.
Uh, make it quick. Uh, some nice trim, uh, tree trimming, uh, just north of the pickleball courts there. And, uh, I'll save all the rest for later. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. And I have nothing. So. At this time, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. And I'll need a second. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. Hearing none, motion carries. We are adjourned. Little over an hour.